KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. On the agenda this morning, commissioners will have a regular and fire meeting, and that will include minutes, a proclamation for Constitution Week, a resolution for the sale of general obligation bonds, and a few, a review of big board items. And this morning Sheriff Easter would like to address the commissioners and our public. So Sheriff?
Good morning Sheriff.
Morning. Well, as you know, it's been a very long week, starting with the death of Deputy Coonsy on Sunday. We are getting through that aspect as a sheriff's office. We're a very strong professional organization, so we're working through those issues. I do want to thank the community for all the support that they've given us. The county has been a tremendous asset to us during this timeframe, and to the commissioners that came yesterday to the vigil, I really appreciate it. The funeral services and celebration of life of Deputy Coonsy will be at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, September 21st, at Central Community Church, located at 6100 West Maple. Following the service, a procession will make its way to Rest Haven Gardens Memorial or Memory at 11-800-WEST-HIWAY-54. I want to talk about the procession a little bit, so the public understands that the route will be from 6100 West Maple, which is close to town west. We'll proceed west on Maple through the intersections of Ridge, Tyler, Maze Road, and then at 119th, we will go south into the cemetery. And so, we ask the public to understand that that processional will be a very long processional, which is pretty normal when a deputy loses their life in the line of duty. And if they want to show their respects, they can stand alongside the road, but please stop their cars, so it doesn't put anybody else in danger. We know that depending on the length of the service, probably about 11:15, 11:30 is when we'll be leaving the church. It will probably take 30 minutes to 45 minutes to, for everybody to arrive to the cemetery. So those intersections and then all the side streets will be shut down by law enforcement during the processional. So just be patient with us while we get to the cemetery. Starting tonight, viewing of Deputy Coonsy will take place at Rest Haven Mortuary. The viewing will begin at 5:00 p.m. and will end at 8:00. Again, the viewing will take place Thursday night between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. There's been a fund set up for the family. He leaves behind a child and a wife. Donations can be made to the family through the Honore Adversus Foundation. What that stands for is Honor During Adversity. What will take place is, it's a fund that's set up for law enforcement that is injured or killed in the line of duty, and all the donations can go there. The personnel at the foundation will then separate out the funds that need to go to the Coonsy family, and then we will deliver those funds to Mrs. Coonsy. If, one way to access it is the Honore, or I'm sorry, the Honore, spelled H-O-N-O-R-E, Adversus, A-D-V-E-R-S-I-S, Foundation, you can access that on the website, and then they'll have a special section and just follow the instructions if you want to make a donation. If the community or anybody else would like to send cards or anything like that for the family, those can be addressed to me at the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office at 141 West Elm in Wichita, Kansas 67203. And with that, again, you know, I can't express how sorry we are for the family, you know, how sorry I am for the deputies that are having to go through this and still perform their duties on a daily basis, but we are doing everything we can to make sure those deputies are still strong, mentally tough, to do the job that they're tasked to do. We in law enforcement understand that this can happen. We pray that it doesn't, but it did. And now we have to face that and go forth and honor Deputy Coonsy this week, and go back to our jobs, and hopefully we get to go home at night. So, thank you again for letting me address you today, and I appreciate all your support.
Thank you Sheriff. Let me, we'll start with Commissioner Howell. I know each of the commissioners want to say a few things, and I'll end it up. Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Easter, I just wanted to extend my sympathy to the family, and I'm usually not without words. You all know me very well, I say too much usually, and today I just want to share briefly with one or two sentences that my, my heart is breaking for you all. My, I extend my sympathy to the family especially. This is the worst news that no one ever wants to hear. It's tragic. We love our law enforcement family, and we're praying for you in that. We just want you to get through this and know that we're with you. We'll do everything, everything we can within our ability to help you through this process, but, and I know you personally, you have a history of a lost family member, and so you personally are probably going through this again, and I just want to say we care about you and love you, and all I can say is that we give money and say a prayer, but other than that, we're helpless, helpless to do anything else that I know of, and so we'll do what we can, but I just want you to know, we, we love you and appreciate you, and we're with you in spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me say a few words. I've received several texts, emails, and so forth. This morning, I received a text from Sheriff Mike Hill, who I have great respect for, and he ended it saying, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the sons of God." Each morning also, since I've been on the commission, a gentleman named Ray Frederick, who some of you may know, sends me an email to start my day. And I, I don't know if it was God's will, or Ray Frederick chose this today, or if it was, I think it was probably God's will. And he said, "Lord, when my world is shaken, help me to remember that you are unshakable. When I feel weak, help me sense your strength, giving me power to rise above my circumstances. When I am afraid, help me to remember to worship you in the face of fear. When I need to stand strong against overpowering challenges, help me to remember all the great things you have done for me. May those memories increase my faith and give me courage to move ahead. When I am weak, I pray you will be strong in me, strengthen me. Help me to depend on your strength and not my own. Help me to stand strong in your power and not my own effort. In the days ahead, I will not try to make things happen, but will depend on your spirit. Give me the faith and patience that I need to rest in your timing." I've said a couple times, Sunday night and last night, how much I appreciate everyone that has supported our sheriff, our sheriff's deputies, especially the family in this time of need. But there are a couple people that I still haven't thanked, and I want to make sure that I do that, and make sure, hopefully I can touch on everyone. First of all, I want to thank our governor. Sometimes you do the right thing, and maybe it's not perfectly legal. Sunday night, I directed all of our flags in Sedgwick County to go to half-staff, and they did. Found out later on, I don't have that authority, but we did it anyway, because it was the right thing to do. Commissioner O'Donnell and I called the governor's office the next morning when I found out that I didn't have that authority, and said, "We really and truly need our flags at half-staff, especially, we need the flag at half-staff above the law enforcement memorial." And within 20 minutes of that, we had written authorization from our governor to put our flags at half-staff. And I want to thank personally our governor for doing that. Last night, I met a number of law enforcement folks from across the state, and I guarantee you Friday, we'll have an awful lot more law enforcement folks from across the state that'll be here to support the family, and our officers here in Sedgwick County, and I appreciate that very much. I've already said how much I appreciate the fact that our EMS was there for Officer It's hard on them. Our fire department was there, and they escorted him back to town, to the hospital that night, or that afternoon. Our 911 dispatchers dispatched him, and then had to work to recover the problems, and we appreciate that. Our regional forensic science center was deeply involved, and I know that it significantly impacted them. But people I haven't mentioned in the past that I really and truly do need to mention, our communications department has been working on this diligently from the very beginning to make sure that we do the right thing, because this doesn't happen very often, and thank God that it doesn't happen very often, we need to make sure that we do the right thing, step by step, and I appreciate the fact that our communications department was there to help us with that. Our finance people were working Sunday and Monday, and we had a check for the wife immediately Monday morning, so that she didn't have to worry about finances immediately. Our HR people were working over the weekend and through every step of the way since then. I appreciate that. Believe it or not, it sounds strange, but I want to tell you, Public Works is involved in this, because they're going to be putting up barricades on the main entrances to things like the shopping centers at Target and Lowe's and so forth, to make sure that people don't get into the convoy as it goes past, heading out to the cemetery. Our legal staff has been involved in this, to make sure that we do everything correctly, and to make sure that we protect the interests of the family. And what, one other thing our finance has done is to make sure that we can get someone that can give them financial guidance through this tough time. And lastly, the staff that I haven't mentioned, our command, our leadership staff, and the staff throughout Sedgwick County, I sincerely appreciate what all of you have done, and the support that you have given the families, our officers, and everyone that's involved in this tragic incident. Well Sheriff, if there's anything else that we need to do, our Board of County Commissioners and our entire staff is here for you and your folks in this time of need. Thank you for being here to bring us up to speed. May God bless all of our law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo one thing that you said, if you don't mind. This does affect more than just the sheriff's office. Laura with 911 Communications is here. Those are the folks that I, sometimes are forgotten in these issues, and they're the ones that have to deal with everything that's going on, and it does absolutely affect them. Our fire and EMS folks, it's just different when you respond to somebody you know, and working for the county, and it has a little bit of a different effect on them too, but you know, it's, that's what we do as public servants. We know that, and, but I can't tell you enough how much we appreciated the 911 Center, Sedgwick County Fire Department, and Sedgwick County EMS, so, thank you.
Thank you Sheriff.
And with those comments, Chairman, we don't have any more to discuss, so you can start the meeting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the meeting for September 19th, 2018. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Dave Henyon, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. Please remain standing for the flag saluting.
Let's pause for a moment of silence for Robert. God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the wonderful blessings that you've given to us in this country, and I thank you for government, for people who you've called to be an organized group, to bring things about, to keep for the health and prosperity of this great nation. I pray for this commission as they begin to decide things today that are important to the county and that need to be taken care of, so we can get along and enjoy these fruits. But today, Lord, also, we come to you with very heavy hearts, because we are broken. I have one of those who bravely put his life on the line, and we are reminded so much on Sunday, how valuable our freedom is and the protection of property, and how people, even how costly it is, as one has put his blood on the line here now, and has lost his life. I want to pray, Father God, especially for all the people who worked during that time, who've been traumatized in their minds, who've been affected, for their brother, the sheriff officer, for those in command staff who are trying to, in the confusions of their minds and the grief that they have as they make decisions, and help, bring about, help for people who are grieving and themselves included, for EMS and fire, and for the dispatchers, all that worked in concert that day, but have been affected. I pray for them. And today, Father God, I pray especially to for Kathleen, who lost a good friend. As we've talked several times, and as she shared, her best friend, who she talked with the first night, all night, and communicated so well with him, and every day when he was coming home, they got on the phone and talked, and continued the solid conversations when he'd get home, and how much she shared life so joyfully with him. For him as a dad, whose little daughter just adored him, and how he adored her, and he treated her as a princess, and as, Lord, now as she comes to grip, especially as she still, I, I'm concerned that she will understand and deal with this. I pray also to Father God, for his mom and dad, for Bob and Dolly. The loss of a child is so great. I just pray, Lord, that you will send your Holy Spirit of comfort and strength upon them, and bring us all that comfort and peace in this time of need. We thank you for his bravery, and for the character, quality of person that he was, and his willingness to put himself on the line for us. In your name we pray, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sheriff Pastor, thank you all for being here today. We sincerely appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Enrew?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We have no one signed up to speak on public agenda, however, I always open it up, if there's anyone in the audience that has not had a chance to sign up and would like to speak this morning, why, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Proclamation, item A, proclamation declaring Constitution Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by constitutional convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. I move that we accept the proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And it will be accepted by Lori Graham. Good morning Lori. Thank you for being here today.
Good morning, I am Lori Graham. I'm a Regent of the Mary Jury Per Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Up here, I have a couple other members from my chapter, Vicki Timmons and Kay Clark, and then we have Patty Robidoux from the Little Arkansas Chapter, Cindy Sprinkle from the Florist Del Solz Chapter, and Vicki Churchman from the Randolph Loving Chapter. DAR has a long history of serving the community, and veterans, and law enforcement, and we would like to also offer our condolences and our heartfelt concerns about this experience that's just happened, and we are available if there's anything that we can do to help relieve any of the pain. Over 240 years ago, American colonists fought, sacrificed, and died to establish and preserve the freedoms now guaranteed to us by the Constitution of the United States. In 1955, the President General of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Gertrude S. Carraway, adopted a project to promote the observance of the U.S. Constitution, with a Memorial Week beginning on the anniversary of the signing of this document, September 17th. She asked DAR chapters, committees, and members to study, teach, and discuss the U.S. Constitution. Carraway also encouraged members to invite their governors and mayors to issue proclamations celebrating the Constitution. Constitution Week was officially declared by our own Kansasian President Eisenhower on August 2nd, 1956. As Daniel Webster stated, "Hold on, my friends, to the Constitution and to the republic for which it stands. Miracles do not cluster, and what has happened once in 6,000 years may not happen again. Hold on to the Constitution, for if the American Constitution should fail, there will be anarchy throughout the world." In this 231st year of the Constitution, we, the Daughters of the American Revolution, from several chapters in Wichita and the surrounding communities, thank you for perpetuating this memorial observance through the proclamation you are issuing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Lori and the Daughters of the American Revolution for this resolution. They come every year, and I truly do appreciate it. I think it is important to point out that many have served in supporting and defending the Constitution throughout, throughout our country. I want to give recognition to two people today. It's been a difficult week, and it'll continue to be even more difficult as we move forward. Obviously Deputy Coonsy, who gave his life in the line of duty and swore to uphold the The ceremony last night was, was very touching, a lot of people showed up. I know this is very difficult for his family. It's a gut-wrenching time when things like this happen unexpectedly. I also want to pay tribute to Colonel Christopher J. Wilson, whose funeral was Monday. He's well-known to the running community, and many in the military, Army reserves in this area. I personally served with him for over 21, for 21 years, from a foxhole in Fort McLean, Alabama, and 1984 was the first time I met him, to the Persian Gulf and Iraq wars, we served together. He went on to serve 33 years, multiple deployments, reached the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. He died unexpectedly at the age of 53, running a marathon, doing what he loves. He loved running, he loved his country, he loved the Constitution, he loved military history, he loved K-State and the ROTC program, he loved the MP Corps, and of course, he loved his community, loved his wife and two children that are left behind. I think these are examples of two great men who have served this country and left a tremendous legacy behind. It is, they're both unexpected, so it is gut-wrenching for the families of members of the community. I think, as some commissioners have said, it's hard to know what we can do, but I think prayers are important, and just being there for them. Both, there've been tremendous turnout for both of these individuals, and I think it's important to the families, and I think sometimes we're at a loss for words, but you cannot underestimate the importance of being there and supporting them in this difficult time. And know that freedom isn't free, and we have good men and women that served throughout our, throughout our history, and will continue to do so, do so, and I just want to pay tribute to those two great men. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for being here this morning, we sincerely appreciate it. Everyone on this bench, and a number of folks in this room have taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Some of us took that as members of military, others as police officers, first responders. It's an oath that we take very seriously. We appreciate the fact that you're here to remind us how important that that document is to all of our freedoms here. I had an opportunity to work overseas a number of times, and I see what happens in countries that don't have a document like that, to protect the freedoms. Well, it's important that we remember exactly how, that document, and why that it is important, and why it's important for us to take that oath to support and defend that document. Thank you very much for being here today. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item B, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, Series B, 2018, of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Morning Lindsay.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Commissioners. Lindsay Poe Rousseau, your CFO. The item before you this morning authorizes a resolution that allows finance staff to work with our bond counsel, Gilmore &amp; Bell, and our municipal advisor, Springstead, to prepare for a bond sale, and hold that competitive sale on October 16th, which would then come to you for approval on October 17th. The sale would fund three types of projects. First would be bridge projects, as you likely recall, in your 2018 capital improvement program, you approved the construction of four bridges to be funded with the proceeds of a bond sale. That's totaling $2.85 million. The second would fund Project Eclipse. Earlier this year, the board approved a $7 million payment to Project Eclipse to be used toward construction of a facility, excuse me, on the Spirit Aero Systems campus. This would reimburse those funds. And finally, the issue would fund road improvement. And finally, the issue would fund road improvements for Redmond Estates, which would be done as special assessments. This financing action is estimated to add up to $10.3 million to the county's balance of outstanding general obligation debt, increasing that total to about $53 million by year end. Each type of project would be repaid on a different schedule. The bridge projects, as we have done in the past, would be repaid over 20 years. The road improvements to be funded with special assessments over 15 years. And the Project Eclipse sales to be repaid over 10 years. Based on the current anticipated debt structure, estimated annual debt service would be around $1 million for the first 10 years, and of course, would then reduce significantly in the outer years as those other payments were completed. As you know, the county's debt policy provides five ratios that measure the impact of the debt on our community. The ratios constitute benchmarks that, when taken together, establish the county's debt limit or debt capacity. We must be below three of those ratios to proceed with issuing debt, and of the five, there's one which measures our annual debt service as a percentage of the overall budget, which we must always be below before issuing debt. Applying those benchmarks to the current proposal, we anticipate remaining below four of those five benchmarks. The one measure where we exceed that benchmark is the one which measures the amount of debt for all taxing entities in Sedgwick County, taken per member of the Sedgwick County population or per capita. It's important to note, though, that this is not because of debt that Sedgwick County has issued, but rather because of the aggregate, I'm sorry, aggregate amount of debt that has been issued in Sedgwick County by all of the cities, school districts, townships, and so on, as well as our own debt. We are well within tolerances that are considered normal within the industry, within the investment banking sector, for a community of our size. If you have any questions about this resolution or the attached documents, I'm happy to try and answer them for you. We also have in the audience Joe Norton and Garth Herman from Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel, and I'm sure that they would be happy to help attempt any questions you may have as well. If you don't have any questions, though, I would recommend you authorize the resolution. And without a doubt.
Thank you, Lindsey. Do we have any questions for Lindsey this morning? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I would say is your schedule of doing the approval, the BOCC, on October 17th. I got a note, I believe, yesterday that said we're not going to have a meeting on that date.
Okay. We will.
So we might need to revise those dates.
Okay. We will coordinate with our bond counsel and municipal advisor to see what kind of flexibility we can work with.
And I'll just say as a comment, I'm trying to think of what to do with this. I wish we could divide the question. I don't know if I would make that motion, divide the question. Some of this I support, some of this I do not support, and it makes it difficult to know what to do here. I anticipate all of this will pass regardless of my opposition to parts of this, but let me just reiterate, the reason I did not vote for the budget this year is because we had the bonding for small road, I say, for small bridge projects mixed into the budget. And last year, we separated that out and gave me the chance to support the budget, but not that piece of the budget. And this year, unfortunately, we did not have that opportunity, so I voted no on the whole package. Although I do appreciate all the tremendous work that was put into that by all your staff. You did a great job. I would have liked to show support for the budget, but I was not able to do that with the package up the way it was. I feel the same way about this. I have been on record of supporting the $7 million for Spirit. That's intended to create jobs and to secure their commitment to our community for 20 years, and it's very unusual. We don't do this type of thing very often, and that was a very unusual opportunity. So that $7 million of this discussion today is related to that economic development strategy. Two of these projects are in my district, and I appreciate the fact that we're getting some things fixed in my district. And of course, the special assessment bonds, I have no problem with that whatsoever. That's a choice of those residents that are making the choice to make some improvements for themselves and pay it off with financing. So parts of this I don't have a problem with, but for the routine borrowing that's built into this package today, Mr. Chairman, would it be okay for us to split, to divide the question and do this in two different motions? Would that be okay?
We can divide the question. I don't doubt that it's going to pass, but so you want to vote for things that are in your district and against things that aren't?
No, sir. That's not what I'm saying. I think that the routine borrowing, there's four, actually three things in here that I would say of that nature that are borrowing for road projects that I don't know that are urgent issues. I appreciate that we're keeping good, our infrastructure in good condition, although I would like to know that the, I would like to know that we're doing things that are, if we're going to use bonding, that these things are urgent and critically important, that we don't have the funds to do it with cash. And so that would be the three items in the middle. But the, I should say, the four items, there's four items, excuse me, $700,000. We just talked about the, I don't know, the four items in the middle. Starts with $700,000, ends with $800,000. Those are the four I would like to see be separated out that I may have problems with. And the other, the other two items on there, the $7 million for Spirit and the $438,000 in special assessment bonds, I don't have a problem with that either. So if it were possible to divide the question, I would like to do that. I'm not sure that's okay.
Lindsey, do you have a response?
I would say the only issue I would have with that, Commissioner, is that we have a single authorization that authorizes us to proceed with preparing documents for that. We aren't necessarily prepared to break it apart. I'm not sure we would want to advertise two separate sales.
All right. With that, I will accept that as a reasonable response. I will go ahead and support this today because the majority of this is things I do support, although I want to be on record that I think that the routine bonding for infrastructure, when it's not necessarily urgent, and we don't have cash to cover those urgent, critical infrastructure needs, but this is more of a routine habitual borrowing. I'm opposed to that philosophy, and so I want to be on record as not supporting those four items in the middle, although two of those are in my district. I appreciate that, but that's not enough to compel me to vote for that behavior. And so I will support the motion today if there's one made to do this entirely, but I want to be on record of opposing four things, four of the six things in this question today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been my fault to use a bond and authority when I feel it's both necessary and appropriate and to oppose those items when it's not. In my estimation, my vote today will be consistent with those values.
Thank you. Commissioner Enru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I just want to be on record as supporting this agenda item in its entirety, the way it's been presented by finance. I understand the comments of my colleagues, but to me, this has been a standard financing strategy that we've used for several years to finance long-term capital projects with debt financing. It has proven valuable for us and successful for us, and I think that's demonstrated by the fact that over the years, we've done this, and we're in a very strong financial position. So this doesn't pose any sort of danger to us. I think that financing long-term projects and bridges that are the ones that are being objected here, but bridges are, in our current analysis, are 60-year assets. We have a process whereby we try to renew our bridges on a 60-year basis. That's a long-term asset, and I think that the general management strategy and governmental strategy that rests on the theory of generational equity holds some truth to it. We're going to build a long-term 60-year asset, and it's reasonable that the cost of that be spread over more than just the current taxpayers, but throughout future users. So I think that there's theoretical support for it. I think there's historical support for it. I think there's current financial management support for it. So I will be supportive of the agenda item.
So do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the recommended action.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item C, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting of September 13th, 2018.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 13th results in three items that we're seeking your approval for. First item is the SAP recruiting and onboarding, and this is for human resources and enterprise resource planning. This recommendation is to accept the quote from HR Focal Point LLC for the costs listed for the subscriptions and establish contract pricing for five years. Our second item, excuse me, are two bridge improvements. The bridges are located on Pawnee between 127th and 143rd Streets East, and the second one between 143rd and 159th Street East. This recommendation is to accept the bid from King Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,228,012.05. Our final item, item three, is re-roofing of the property in Evidence Building for Project Services, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from TR Management, also known as JB Turner &amp; Sons Roofing and Sheet Metal, and this is in the amount of $68,752, and also establish a unit pricing for possible fiberglass skylight replacement. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these three items.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Thomas? Seeing none, move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items, Delta through November.
Move to approve Delta through November. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Yost says he has no legislative agenda today. Next item, please.
Other?
Does any of the Commissioners wish to say anything during other? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo some of the statements that you made earlier regarding our Deputy Kunsy and how much I appreciated your leadership, and we were able to, Commissioner Dennis and I were able to attend the vigil last night, and you were, oh, Commissioner Ranzau was there, I did not see him, but you were able to address the crowd and send the condolences from everybody in Sedgwick County, and I thought that was wonderful, what you did last night. So anyway, just wanted to thank you for your leadership on that. Chairman Dennis, you've been an exemplary leader during a tough time. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it. Commissioner Enru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to make a comment about this tragedy that we've experienced in our community and appreciate all the different individuals and agencies that have stepped up to do their part in trying to lend support. You know, anytime there's an untimely death in a community or a family or in a Sedgwick County family, we all suffer and feel a sense of loss. In this particular incident, the death of Deputy Kunsy seems like it's particularly poignant to each of us because, you know, this is one of us who was out on the line in not just providing public safety, but providing personal safety to each one of us. And in the circumstances, he ended up giving his life, and so it's one that brings a particular depth of grief to all the members of the Sedgwick County family. And I just, I just trust that God in His grace will lend some relief and assuage the pain of bereavement of the family. And I trust that that will happen and trust that they will be able to pick up the pieces of their life and go forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else need to come during other? Anyone else have anything that we need to discuss for the board meeting today? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned from the board meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to orders our governing body of Fire District Number One for September 19th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Enru?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda. If there's anyone in the audience would like to speak, we'll give you an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Special Fire Meeting Minutes of August 9th, 2018.
Commissioners, each of you have had a chance to look at and review the fire minutes from August 9th and August 15th. I don't see any problem with any of the one of them. I move that we approve both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present. Or aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda item, Charlie.
Move to approve consent item, Charlie. Any discuss, or second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Enru?
Did she say my name? Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please. We have no next item. Anyone else have anything to come for the fire board today? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you all for attending.